Okay, seven o'clock. Call this meeting in order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Allen.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Ms. Stravich.
Here.
Reindell.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. We need the approval of the minutes from the Budget Workshop Meeting of May 17th. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Which been made and supported. Is there any discussion on those minutes? Being not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We also have the City Council meeting minutes from the regular meeting on the same date. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Which been made and supported. Is there any discussion on these minutes? Being not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Audience comments and any non-agenda items? Is there anybody here that would like to speak to City Council on any non-agenda items? We'd ask that you go to the podium, state your name and the address for the clerk.
None.
Okay, thank you. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? If not, a motion to accept the agenda as presented would be in order.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Which been made and supported. Any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Which been made and supported. No discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to our public hearing for the proposed fiscal year 2021-22 city budget. We need a motion to go into the public hearing.
I make a motion to open the public hearing on proposal fiscal year 2021-22 budget at 7:04 PM. Support.
Which been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We now open up the public hearing. Mr. City Manager?
In accordance with the city charter, we're holding the public hearing tonight on the proposed fiscal year 2022, 2000, I'm sorry, the 2021-2022 budget. The total city budget is 11.6 million, and this includes a 4.6 million general fund budget. The City Council held three budget workshops in April and May to review the budget, and the budget that's presented before you reflects the modifications made by City Council during those three budget workshops. The budget has been on file in the city clerk's office, had any public expressed an interest to review it. I don't believe we've had anyone stop into City Hall to do that. The budget calls for a tax levy of 15.8717 mils for general operating purposes. The city doesn't have any debt millage, and we do set aside out of that 15.8717, we set aside an amount equal to 1.55 mils for street improvements. The, this city will also levy 1% admin fee for all tax collection and a flat fee of $219.32 annually per unit for collection of trash, recycling, and yard waste. The adopting resolution tonight also assigns 400,000 of the general fund fund balance toward dispatch technology upgrades in fiscal year 2022-2023.
Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak on the public hearing on our budget?
No one.
Okay. City Council, any comments before we close? Motion to close would be in order.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2021-22 budget at 7:06 PM. Support.
Which been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Being not, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration, which this evening we have six. The first one being consideration of approving Resolution Number 2021-10, adoption of the fiscal year 2021-22 city budget. Mr. City Manager?
Again, I, everything still holds true from my discussion on the public hearing or during the public hearing. It's an 11.6 million dollar total budget with a 4.6 million dollar general fund budget. Even with the assigned monies that we discussed, we still end the fiscal year with a fund balance of 1 point, or 1,532,692 dollars, which is a 33.2% fund balance. So, I would like to thank council and all the department directors that worked very hard on putting this budget together.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-10, which adopts the city of Richmond fiscal year 2021-22 budget, appropriates the necessary sums for each fund of the city, adopts the 2021 through 2027 capital outlay program, assigns a portion of the fund balance, directs the levy of taxes and fees for municipal purposes, and directs the preparation of tax roll and collection of taxes.
Support.
Which been made and supported. Any discussion?
I would just like to thank council for a fantastic budget season, and I'm just really proud of ourselves of how we're one of the only municipalities in the entire state that is debt-free. I don't, I don't know if you guys realize that, but last time I went to the MML thing and discussed that with us, I said that. They actually dug up something and they're like, well, you have this, this Lennox thing. And I said, well, that's, that's not really debt. And, and it's something that we should really be proud of ourselves. And also, nobody's here to dispute it. So, that also speaks volumes as well. So, I just thank you for working together. Though we, we all have our differences, we all come together in unity, and that's really something we should be proud of.
I agree with you, Jamie. I appreciate all the information that we get beforehand from our administration. And it makes it so much easier for us to understand the 11.6 million dollar amount of money that we're entrusted by our community to administrate throughout the year. So, I think the, the meetings are great. We really are able to dig into a lot of areas there informally, so that we can ask the stupid questions and not get quoted maybe. You know, it's, it's a great way of, I think, working so that we know. We have firsthand knowledge now on, on most everything that's going to come before the council for the next year. There's things that we really dove into in those three big workshops that we had. So, yes. Any other comments? Is there any audience comments on this item?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number two is consideration of approving the Tax Increment Finance Authority's Tax Base Sharing Agreement. Mr. City Manager?
The City Council is scheduled to consider entering into a tax base sharing agreement with the City of Richmond Tax Increment Finance Authority. This year, we have reduced the agreement from a 15% tax base share to a 12%, which then will leave a little bit more money in the Tifa fund. This is something, obviously, we've been doing since the 2012-2013 fiscal year. I would just mention that as we get down to the numbers where we're at now, 67,000, you know, next year it'll probably be in the 50s somewhere. We may call it, call it a day. You know, we probably won't go all the way down where we're sharing $10,000 worth of taxable value there or something, you know. So, I would say in the next year or two, it'll probably come to an end. But we would propose. But for now, this allows 67,648 dollars to remain in the general fund.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve the capture to Suss Valley sharing agreement between the City of Richmond Tifa, City of Richmond for the fiscal year 21-22, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Support.
Which been made and supported. Is there any further discussion? This is a good sign, right?
Yes.
This is a very good sign that we don't have to have that share agreement with them. Any audience comments on this item?
None.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number three is consideration of approving the fiscal year 2021-22 city fee schedule. Mr. City Manager?
The council is scheduled to consider adopting the fiscal year 2021-22 fee schedule. During the budget workshops, each individual department director along with their department budgets submitted their fee schedule changes. And so, this really is just a summarization of all of those that were before you during those meetings. Some are fee changes, others are just cleaning up some text so that hopefully our fee schedule is a little easier to read or clearer on certain fees.
Very good. Is there a motion before discussion?
I make a motion to approve the city of Richmond fiscal year 2021-2022 fee schedule as presented by the city manager.
Support.
Which been made and supported. Any discussion? Is there any audience comments on this item?
None.
Okay, thank you. We've already gone through this. If there's nothing else, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four is consideration of approving Resolution Number 2021-11, approving the SMART fiscal year 2022 municipal and community credit contracts. That's a mouthful. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider adopting Resolution Number 2021-11, which will approve the SMART municipal credit and community credit contracts for fiscal year 2022. The resolution indicates that SMART is authorized to reimburse Richmond Lennox EMS for expenses incurred for providing community transit to the residents of the city of Richmond. I would say that we've been doing this now for quite a while. I would hate to guess, I would say 10 years probably, that, you know, we haven't been using them for rec trips or anything, but turning them over to the transit service and probably longer. And I do believe, well, this year, the amounts are 500, or 5,662 dollars in municipal credits and 12,963 dollars in community credits. And I believe in the other room tonight, we have both Jeff White from Richmond Lennox EMS and Fred Barbret from SMART.
Very good. Director White, would you like to have a few words for the council?
Certainly, yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor. So, since 1999, actually, is when we began providing transit service with the city of Richmond. So, we have been doing this for a bit of time now with you, and we've appreciated the city's support throughout the growth of, of this, of this project. Certainly, this year was challenging with, with the pandemic. And while ridership was down, we were still operating nearly as many buses on the road every day. We were only doing essential trips. We were assuring necessary distancing on those small buses, which meant, as opposed to taking three or four people, maybe we would only be taking one or two at a time, just in order to keep everybody safe. So, while the numbers were down overall, service, especially for those most in need for appointments to doctor's offices, grocery, the pharmacy, still went on uninterrupted during COVID. Everybody's pretty, very familiar with our vaccine program that went on and what a tremendous partnership that was. When that all began and nobody in the, in the area or in the county could really manage the number of calls coming in, SMART stepped up organizationally and then put its call takers on making, getting those appointments made so we could get people through the vaccine drive-through and then helped coordinate getting people on small buses and bringing them through. In total, about 16,000 vaccinations were administered at our building on 32 Mile Road, thanks to the cooperation of SMART, the EMS, and because, and he's sitting here with me in the room, and I've said this by email a number of times and, and in person when I can to anybody who will listen. You know, Richmond Police Department provided us an officer from day one till day end of the drive-through. The gentleman there was phenomenal. He really became part of the team. He wasn't just there to take care of policing matters and traffic. He really just pitched in and literally did everything on the site except put vaccine in arms. So, we couldn't have done it without him and without that city partnership to make that all work. So, thank you to everybody officially from the podium here, from the city of Richmond, who helped us make that happen. Your DPW was involved in, in helping us with signage and other things. So, like I say, this really was a tremendous community effort. Transit, as of about two weeks ago, is back to full service, which means we're doing both essential and non-essential trips, including those trips that we provide to the airport. So, so really, everything is back open, and we're seeing numbers rise pretty fast as far as ridership goes, as we hope to get this pandemic finally behind us. One small bit of confusion that does occur sometimes with folks scheduling for our vehicles. Right now, the CDC still requires face masks for both vaccinated and non-vaccinated persons on public transportation. That's why everybody on an airplane has to wear one, everybody on a bus, everybody on a train, because our buses are funded with public transportation dollars and are a, a part of the public transportation service. All persons on the buses, whether vaccinated or unvaccinated, are required to wear vaccines. We keep, we keep face mask on the buses. So, if somebody approaches a bus without a face mask, we give them one. We don't, we don't cancel their ride, if you will. We just ask them to put it on when they get onboard the vehicle. The one other thing, and just because, I think it was mentioned by one of the council members, it's always hard to tell on the TV, but somebody was talking a little bit about recreational trips. During the pandemic, we were able to work with the folks at SMART and secure some additional dollars. And with those additional dollars, we were able to purchase a large bus. It'll be our first large bus for the operation. It'll be a 24-passenger vehicle that will be specifically for communities to be able to use for recreational type trips and other activities. There'll just be one of them. So, it'll be on a first come, first served basis. But certainly, you know, we'd welcome the city using it for recreation or senior programming in order to get a few more people somewhere when we, when we need to. The total cost of that vehicle is about 138,000 dollars. And while we would like to get it sooner as opposed to later, as with all things COVID, manufacturing has slowed down on these vehicles, and it looks like it might be, you know, mid-fall before that vehicle arrives. We had initially hoped maybe we'd be looking at July or August, but I think we're going to be looking more like October or November before we have that vehicle in our possession. With that, again, council, thank you for your continued support of our program, and again, thank you to the chief and, and the DPW and their departments for their assistance with the vaccine drive-through.
Jeff, could you possibly introduce? We have a very small TV here, so we couldn't see that Fred was sitting over there.
Oh, he is. I'm sorry.
Could we introduce Fred, please?
Fred's sitting here looking on, so I'll. Hello, Mayor, Council, City Manager. Thanks for having us. Thanks for allowing me to continue to work with Jeff and his crew, and hope all you are well and healthy. Do you have any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
No, we just want to say how much we appreciate what you've done with Jeff and what SMART's done for our community over the years. You've, you've always been very positive with our community, and it really, I mean, that started out in 99. It doesn't seem like it was that long ago, but, you know, we started out with one bus, and we, look what Jeff just got done telling us about a 24-seater and all the other buses that he has to transport so many different people in our community. I know that has a lot to do with what you have done, probably at the board levels. So, we really appreciate what you've done, along with what Jeff has done too. So, since we have the chance for you to be on camera here, I just thought we'd take that moment and let everybody know who Fred Barbret is and how important he's been to the city of Richmond all these years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make the motion to adopt Resolution 2021-11, which approves the SMART municipal credit and the community credit contract for fiscal year 22, and agreed to transfer the amounts of 5,662 dollars in municipal credits and 12,963 dollars in community credits to the Richmond Lennox EMS in payment for their community transit service.
Support.
Which been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Any other public comments?
None.
Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thank you. Item number five, consideration of mobile food truck request, Lois Wagner Memorial Library. Mr. City Manager?
The City Council is scheduled to consider a special event request for a mobile food vendor from the Lois Wagner Memorial Library to have one mobile food vendor, the Kona Ice Truck, on Wednesday, August 11th, 2021, from 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM. The food truck is part of the library's End of the Summer Reading Program Party, and anyone completing the six-week reading program will be invited to the party that will also include snow cones. Our librarian, Julianne Cammer, is here tonight if you should have any questions on the food truck or the reading program.
Julianne, would you like to go ahead and add anything to what the city manager has said?
This is something that we have kind of, with a new person in the position, kind of looked at doing something different. And when we had started to plan, things were looking a little bit worse than they are currently. So, we really wanted an outdoor option, something still special for the kids, something that would still motivate them. So, that was kind of the impetus behind bringing them in. And, you know, that's about, that's about it.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the special event request for a mobile food vendor for the Lois Wagner Memorial Library to have the Kona Ice Truck on Wednesday, August 11th, 2021, from 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM for the Summer Reading Program Party.
Support.
Which been made and supported by Emily. Any discussion?
Is that one-hour window long enough? I'm just looking at that.
That'd be a good problem to have. Hopefully, I imagine they'll stick around a little bit longer if we need them to.
Well, we'll let you stretch it a little bit, just in case.
Does Counsel Schultz curious if there's an adult reading program as well that can participate in the class?
Well, there is.
Alrighty then.
We'll see you tomorrow.
Any other comments? Is there any other comments from the audience?
None.
Okay, thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is consideration of approving Resolution 2021-12, authorizing signature for Michigan Department of Transportation contract. Mr. City Manager?
The City Council is scheduled to consider approving Resolution 2021-12, a resolution authorizing the city manager as the designated official to sign the MDOT contract 21-5154. This contract is for the signal modernization at M19 and Division Road. This particular signal was removed from the larger project where they had about 10 signals all being done that included 31 and Grashit, due to the fact that we needed to do some right-of-way acquisition. So, it took a little longer to get that squared away than, so it had to be pulled out from, from that project. So, it's been bid a couple months later. And unfortunately, we had set aside funds in the Tifa fund to pay for the upgrades to the mast arm design due to the required, once we went out onsite and realized where those mast arms needed to go. As we all know, there was additional property acquisition or easements that needed to be obtained by MDOT. So, that drove up the price of the proposal in our cost share portion. However, one of those easements happened to be was city-owned property. So, although the total project went up, we're getting money back from MDOT and about 17,000 dollars for the easement that they need from us. So, overall, it's essentially a wash or a little bit in the city's favor, actually. So, we have funds budgeted for the upgrade, and this is just to get moving. They need an authorized signature. I'm already signed up with the MDOT's DocuSign program. So, I would request that you authorize me to sign the contract.
Okay. Is there a motion, council?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-12, a resolution designating the city manager as the individual authorized to sign the MDOT contract 21-5154 between MDOT and the city of Richmond for the signal modernization at Division Road and Main Street, M19.
Support.
Which been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Certainly enhance our downtown streetscape with these new poles, and also, I think it'd make the, the signals a little easier to.
Yes.
To see also, the new style that they're coming up with. Anything else? Is there any comments from the audience?
None.
Thank you. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to miscellaneous matters from the city manager, sir.
Those people driving along Main Street at the north end of town may notice that the town clock doesn't quite look like it used to. Regulator Time Company is in, Tifa had approved in the current year budget funds to do some refurbishment to the town clock. So, they're in here. They'll be doing some sandblasting and repainting of the clock and updating of the dials and things of that nature. So, they came in from Kansas today and will be here pretty much all week.
Very good.
Also, swim lesson registration. I know there was kind of up in the air. Obviously, we believe we have enough staff now to run at least a modified schedule of swim lessons. And so, that registration, they can, residents can find all the information out on the city website if they go to cityofrichmond.net and just look over on the left-hand side under News and Information. The links are all there, and registration opens up wide tomorrow for anyone in the Richmond community.
Very good. Moving on, council comments. John?
Milton.
Emily.
I would just like to thank the cable coordinator, Jason Robbins, for recording and live streaming the awards for the Richmond schools. With parents not being able to attend, today was the first day they did it, and there's so much feedback already from parents still getting to see their little ones collect their awards. So, I'm very thankful for that.
I agree with you 100%. I got notice on that about nine o'clock from my daughter. At 9:30 was first grade, and I was able to watch it, you know.
Yeah.
On my computer. It was great.
It's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just like to say, he's been doing a great job, and I know some, some of the days, the last couple of weeks, he's been coming in at 6:30, just to make sure that he's over there and all set up and ready to go by the time they're ready to do their programming.
I think there's other grades yet.
Yes. Yep, yep. I think the next two days.
Correct.
So, that's, yeah. Very good, very good. Okay, Jamie?
And I would just like to thank the mayor, and again, the cable coordinator and the city staff for fabulous Memorial Day remembrance and parade. And it was just a great time to stand around the monument and really, actually afterwards, read the names that are on there of the people who, from the city, who actually have died in war. And so, I thank you for keeping that tradition on, and it, it was a success, so.
BFW likes the spot, and I think we're going to be staying in that spot rather than the traditional cemetery. It worked out very nice. I agree with you 100%. Jim?
I do have one question. The trees from 32 Mile Road to Water Street on Lasermark side are dying.
Oh.
The one in front of Lasermark is dead, and the other ones.
Is dying?
I would have, you know, it's just, and I was just curious if anybody else had noticed that. My wife brought it to my attention.
I had seen that they were slow starting, so I, I haven't talked to D and E or Jim about it yet, but, yeah. So, it's the east side of Main from Division up to Water?
Yep.
Okay. Is it just two trees, or is there more trees?
Well, actually, I think there's four. There's two that got some green on it, but they'll never make it two-by-four.
Yeah, and the other two are not looking healthy? Yeah, and the other two are not looking healthy?
Now, the one in front of Lasermark is actually dead.
I hope we don't have...
There's nothing on it.
Hope we don't have a gas leak, uh, natural or otherwise gas leak. That's funny that just those trees would go.
I think it's a matter, I, those have been problematic for us all along.
Have they?
It's a, I think the condition of the soils underground and the amount of pocket we were able to create, uh, like very clay and to try and get good soil that drains under there. It's been problematic, but I'll, I'll check, and maybe with our vector, we might be able to make that a little better next time before we plant again.
Yeah. Maybe there's a hardier tree that we could go to.
Yeah, yeah, let them pick something versus, you know, us trying to say we'd like this type, you know?
Yeah.
What can survive.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And Rob?
Uh, nothing new, Dad.
Mike?
Um, I would just concur with everything, but also, uh, expand on the Memorial Day parade. I, I agree with everything that was said, and at first, I was apprehensive about the shorter route, because the longer route allowed more people to see it, but I think, I think more people saw it this year, because instead of them being along the route, they moved to where it was, and by having it, the festivities in the center of town, you had a lot of participation there as opposed to when we were in the cemetery. Had good participation as well, but not everybody that was watching along the parade route would come out that far too, so, I think, you know, and it was hard because the roads were closed too, so they couldn't really drive to get there.
Yeah, yeah, everybody had to go around the back end or walk.
Or walk or something, so, I think it was just a fantastic change, and, um, I really appreciate all the work that you did on that too, so it's, uh, it's a good, a good change to a longstanding tradition in town.
Yeah.
And with that also, it's great to hear about the Good Old Days Festival, you know, being able, proceeding with that as, as planned, so hopefully, everything stays the same with that, and have a great festival.
Well, you have a big, you have a big, uh, part of that also, so it just means a lot of work for you for the next three months. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, well, you've already stated what I was going to state, so I'm good. Um, we have, uh, a calendar to go through, and I have, uh, some announcements, it looks like, here, tonight. Uh, the Lois Wagner Memorial Library is having the 2021 Summer Reading Kickoff. It's called Tales and Tales, uh, TAILS, and Tales, T-A-L-E-S. Uh, that's going to kick off on Wednesday, June 16th, from 1:00 to 2:00. There's going to be a petting farm, and, which will include goats, rabbits, sheep, geese, chickens, and turkeys. So, hopefully, uh, our camera can pick that up. Looks pretty interesting. That's the first time I've seen that, but, uh, looks like a great thing for the kids, uh, at, at the library, starting June 16th at 1:00. There's also a children's entertainment series, uh, that will be held at the Beebe Street Park Pavilion. Uh, it's free, uh, summer shows. This is put on by our Parks and Recreation Department. The first one being Thursday, June 17th. There will be a ventriloquist in Music and Fun at 11:00 a.m., excuse me, on June 17th. On Thursday, July 22nd, it'll be Mr. C and the Shoestring Band, that also will be at 11:00 a.m. And then Thursday, August 12th, Gordon Russ Magician at 11:00 a.m. also. So that's June 17th, July 22nd, and August 12th. It'll be the children's, uh, entertainment free series, so hopefully, we can get that up on our, uh, Channel 6 boards also. We also have a summer youth volleyball camp. It's for nine to 14-year-olds. That also is being handled by our Richmond Recreation Department. The first, uh, yeah, the first gathering will be Monday, June 21st. Looks to me as though it's, uh, Monday, June 21st through Thursday, June 24th for nine to 11-year-olds, and then Monday, August 2nd through Thursday, August 5th for 12 to 14-year-olds. Again, that's going to be at the Beebe Street Park. Uh, there is a cost involved. I would, uh, tell you to contact the Parks and Recreation at 727-3064, uh, for further information. Another, uh, new festival, uh, it's not a new festival, but it's, uh, really, uh, gearing up this year. Uh, it will be the, uh, Historical Society's Heritage Festival. Uh, it will be held both Saturday and Sunday, June 26th and June 27th. It's from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00. It's free to, to browse. There will be many Model Ts and Model As and other vintage cars on display. Uh, they will be celebrating the history and Michigan log cabin days also, but all the historic buildings will be open. There'll be horse-drawn wagon rides, uh, all kinds of, uh, uh, feed, touch, and learn at the children's petting farm. There's going to be a number of things, a lot of tractors, uh, antique tractors and whatnot will be there. Um, that, again, is on Saturday, June 26th. It's the last weekend in June. That should be a great time. On our calendar, this Thursday at 7:00, we have a planning commission meeting at 7:00 right here at, uh, City Hall. Uh, last day of school will be Thursday also. Uh, the calendar says 11th is the last day. That was changed this past week by the schools. So, uh, I believe it's half-days, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday are half-days for the kids, so, watch out for the kids, uh, around town. The other thing is, is, uh, the big Richmond Little League Blue Devil Tournament will be happening on, uh, this Friday, the 11th, 12th, and 13th. There'll be a number of games going on throughout the weekend, and that too is all free to the public. The library board meeting will be held at the library on the 14th at 7:00. It's also Flag Day, our annual Flag Day, and I, you know, I say it every year, put your flag out. You know, we need to be proud of our country, and one of the ways of doing that is putting your flag out on your porch or in front of your house or whatever it may be, or in front of your business too. Um, let's get those flags out on Flag Day, the 14th. Uh, two weeks from tonight will be the, the next regular city council meeting, uh, and the Sunday before, we'll all be taking the day off, I'm sure, as Father's Day. Um, we'll all, you know, just be doing exactly whatever we want on Father's Day, is that right? Yeah, funny, yeah, but anyhow, happy, uh, Father's Day to all the fathers on the 20th. And that's all I have for the calendar. We do have a closed session that we need to go into this evening. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to convene into closed session in accordance with Section 8(c) of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act 267 of 1976, as amended for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement as requested by administration.
Motion made and supported. Is there any discussion? Be not, roll call, please.
Green?
Yes.
Ms. Stravich?
Yes.
Reindell?
Yep.
Ricks?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Motion does pass. We'll go into closed session.[1768.99][1768.99][music]